Ms. Collins, here. Ms. We look at that.
So green, sorry.
Dr. Jacobowitz?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Ms. Lau?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Shawnee? Mrs. Shear? Here. Please stand for pledge allegiance. My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in this law. Please be seated. Okay, I will entertain motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of lack of bargaining under the Taylor law, ATF, ESP, CSA, and ASCA, matters leading to employment of particular individuals, individuals, and employment of history of particular individuals or corporations. So, that was in favor.
Hi.
And propose. And we will return to the public session as close to seven as possible. Action coming out of executive session, and so we've reached the first opportunity for public participation. And we have a couple people signed up. The first one is a Mr. Jack Wood. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
You may break.
Let me run through the protocol. There's a, the policy is affixed to the podium. You have two minutes. If you prepared something in writing you want to leave with the board and you don't have time to finish it, you may leave it with the clerk and she'll disseminate it to all the trustees. It's not a conversation, and our work clerk will let you know when you're approaching the two minutes. And we speak about issues, not people or students discipline. So please, right up to the podium. Can you hear me?
Okay, good evening. My name is Jack Wood, and I've been a Kingston resident since 2016, when I moved from Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I live with my family, my wife Maria, our six-year-old daughter Daphne, and three-year-old son Lewell, in midtown Kingston. We are a bilingual household, speaking natively both English and Spanish. We live on Franklin Street between two great institutions of learning, the Kingston Library and the George Washington Elementary School, where our daughter, the six-year-old Daphne, enjoys being in first grade. I'm amazed every day that the Kingston CSD is home to a public Montessori school. This school is great for my family. It provides a flexible quality and nurturing education for our daughter, and soon our son too, I hope. But I also see it as a perfect for our midtown neighborhood, the most ethnically and socio-economically diverse community in our region, with emphasis on positive attitude, hard work, and conflict resolution. I'm grateful for all of this and can't imagine our own neighborhood elementary school to be any better. I'm concerned, though, I learned earlier this year that the George Washington Elementary School principal, Val Hallam, is retiring at the end of the academic year, so the school will soon experience a transition to new leadership. While I always try to look to approach change with optimism and to look for new opportunities and different ways of doing things, in this case, I'd like to see the school board recognize that the Montessori approach is a smashing success that deserves to be built upon. I would like to see an ambitious and transparent hiring process for the new principal that seeks candidates with proven success and educational visions. I would like to see candidates with solid experience in Montessori education and in public education, not just a willingness to learn about Montessori education and be certified while on the job. I would like to see candidates with significant experience and understanding of diverse educational environments that is linguistically, economically, and ethnically diverse. In short, that's midtown. And I would like to see George Washington parents involved to a significant degree in the hiring process.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Thank you. Now, you'd be interested in knowing that we do have a plan, and this is actually on our annotated calendar for January. I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent.
And just very quickly, I did have an interaction with the PTA president, PTO president at George Washington. And I will be, you know, in Jan, after the holiday, I will be going over to George Washington. I've been invited to a meeting there for the whole George Washington community to talk about the process and very much what Mr. Wood just talked about, the characteristics and the skills that they would like to see in the next candidate. So that's where the jumping off protocol will start.
Did you want to leave anything with that work clerk?
No, I don't have. It's just handwritten notes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next is our mayor, Stephen Olaf.
Thank you all, and I think that in my three years almost, this is the first time I've gotten to address the board, and so thank you for the opportunity to do this. I will try to stay within my two minutes. I'm here this evening to just say that I'm really looking forward to working with the Kingston City School District on two really important projects, part of our downtown revitalization initiative, the DRI, as it's commonly known. As you all know, you all have been very supportive in that process, and we were so excited to learn that we are receiving two and a half million dollars towards the DStadium. And I just wanted to note that I'm really looking forward to working with the board over the next few months as we hopefully transition DStadium to city ownership and really be able to invest these much-needed state funds to make this a world-class institution for all of our students and the community. And so I wanted to just say that I'm looking forward to that partnership, and it truly has been a pleasure to work with the superintendent and the athletic director to kind of get us to this point. And so on that, I just want to say thank you. My second topic related to the $10 million is a project called the Kingstonian. While we were able to receive almost $4 million from that fund for public improvements related to the project, this was a project that was somewhat the brainchild of ours here in the city government, because we needed to find a new parking infrastructure in this historic district. As we all know, parking is a hot commodity. And so I put out a request for a proposal to find a developer that was willing to work with us, that was willing to invest in the way that we wanted them to invest in Kingston, that we felt was paying dividends for many generations to come. And with the Kingstonian project, we feel that we've been able to come up with a really great project. I want to thank the board and the finance committee for letting us come and meet with you to discuss that project and kind of give you an introduction. And I really look forward to working with the finance committee in the future, and I would hope that in the future you invite me back to speak.
We are.
A little bit more than two minutes.
We actually would like to extend an invitation for our January meeting for you to come and speak with that and bring whoever you want, okay? If you would do that. And our work clerk will communicate with you, letting you know what time and where and what day. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Good to meet you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this juncture? Anyone? Well, Gary Nautigers, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Catalino and the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Shear. We're going to start the superintendent's report a little differently this evening, and I'm going to do my report first and then hand over to our two other presenters tonight. As Mr. Ryan O'Ney says, the rank comes privilege, so I get to go first tonight. One of the goals of the board, one of the requests of the board was to know a little bit more about the grant funding that we receive here in Kingston City School District. So this could be a report that would go on for most of the evening. I won't do that. I'm trying to just really focus in on two of our grants. Give you a little idea and a quick overview of the grant funding that we receive here in Kingston. We received over $6 million in grant funding for 1819. I should say receives, because some of it's still coming in, some of it's still review, some of it comes in in trickles. But those grants come in from, you know, federal grants, state grants, and we do have some local groups that give us grants. An example is Title I. There's $2 million come through us through one part of Title I, and $250,000 of school improvement grant, which is also Title I. Those really look at working for things like reading teachers, math teachers, our TOPS program, middle schools, people reading and math, RTI people together, elementary summer schools, materials and supplies for those kinds of things. So there's a lot of different things we spend that money on. It really is in support of students, especially in our Title I schools. Our SIG grant does a lot of things, including pays for our COBRC, next with Wild Earth. So a lot of community partners involved in those kinds of things. Title II-A, this is also a title grant, it's about $128,000 in most events against personnel salaries. Title III-A is really about our ENL students, and to help us with our ELL students and the work that we're doing. Hopefully, that would be an increase moving forward as we see that population continue to grow. Our IDEA is a lot around really around professional support and staff for our students with disabilities. And then our My Brothers Keeper Grant, which I'll talk about in another minute. And we have our Teachers of Tomorrow Grant, which kind of dovetails with the grants with the Title III-A, in that really is working to try to get some more teachers to get an extension to their certification so they can work with our ELL students. We do have smaller grants, a lot of these are out there, Holster Savings Grant, Lethbridge Grant, we use our lab program, maybe the DBT, which is Doing Better Today, which is not really what it stands for, but I'm not going through that actual word, because I don't remember. Dialectical. Thank you. Dialectical Behavioral Therapy. We call it Do Better Today. Nobel Foundation, our Food Security Grant was a similar different run. So it's just a lot of different places where money comes from, as far as grant funding is concerned. One of the things that people really want to talk about was our My Brothers Keeper Grants, and I'm going to just briefly talk about that. So My Brothers Keeper Grant is a family community engagement grant called the My Brothers Keeper Grant. And the purpose of it really is to engage our students, our male students of color, really to, not only to help them succeed, but also to really create an environment and a community where those students feel they can be successful and where they feel they can be where they belong. It also is about reaching out to other parts of the community to make sure that we are creating the school community that we want to have here in Kingston. So really looking at bringing groups that are not necessarily represented together, together. We have several partners in this. Our largest partner is Bard College, which is one of the original partners, and the Brothers of Bard. And they really make up the bulk of this grant. They provide mentoring, workshops, college visit, leadership training, we went and found the Washington DC and took with the special leadership training. They have conferences for approximately 30 Kingston High School now students of color. So we also have an onsite coordinator who's with here with us every day at Kingston High School, that is in the affiliate Bard, but stays at Kingston High School to work with those students. Also the literacy, offered four English language lessons at James Elementary for parents, again, reaching out to a group of underrepresented but increasing, growing number of people. Go Beyond Greatness, which does their Summer Night Academy, really working with students on building their brand, helping teach them who they want to be and where they want to go moving forward. Starlight Productions, the TMI project, many of you were involved in that or saw that, and that's the black story, not of the Kingston High School. One of the newer partners, this is really part of last year, but it isn't out yet, starting this year, is our CCE partnership, and they're doing what's called the Peaceful Guardian Project, which is a youth and police workshop, working together, understand, you know, helping really create relationships between the youth in our schools and the police, so we have better understanding, each of them have better understanding of each other, maybe creating some opportunities for real relationships that would improve how, you know, how the police think of our students and how our students think of the police. So it's, I think it's going to be an interesting and it's definitely a worthwhile partnership here. And we have the New York State Defenders Association, which you all met, our friends from the New York State Defenders Association at our last court training for Strong Justice, and those are our MBK partners. But there's big news. So, big news is we just learned the other day that we did receive the pre-K extension grant, which obviously, you know, is important to us considering we are building a pre-K center as we speak. We just awarded $687,000, almost $687,000 a year, and that's not, unlike many other grants where it's a three-year and it's kind of a seed and then they actually, this is permanent, we're getting this. This is in addition to our UTK funding that comes every year through state, really basically doubling what we get. What are we going to do with that? So again, there's requirements of how we could spend this money, and I do want to thank Dr. Falcello and her team for writing this grant. This is one of those grants, frequently, grants will come in front of me and someone will say, "I read this grant, I really like it," and I think, "You're not getting it. We're not going to get this grant." You know, you see the people who are applying, we're not going to get it. This is one of those I really had my doubts, so I was really pleased and congratulations to Dr. Falcello for the work on this. So what we're going to do is, first of all, for our GW community, a lot of people have been talking about the three-year-olds, we're going to be able to have 35 three-year-old students at GW effective basically January. So we're starting that process, it's him who's involved, and you know, Dr. Falcello's been working, Ms. Conde's been working with them to get that geared up. We are going to convert 136 community-based slots into full-day slots. So right now, our UTK, the free program for those students, those four-year-olds, is really a half-day program. Now, 136 of those are going to be increased to full days. So our community-based partners who can do that are really, are getting involved and they're going to start getting ready to double that, you know, like double those young people's, four-year-olds' time with that. We're going to add an additional pre-K classroom at Edson. So that's, the thing here is, we need to do it now as part of the grant. Our intention is to start it now at Edson, move it to Maha when we open next fall. And a lot of the money there for materials, supplies, furniture, anything, and new classes, which you all know we're going to need for the new building. So we're really excited. We think this is a great opportunity, really a good opportunity for our community-based partners as well. And so those students, we talked about a lot, how most, many of our students are already in BPK, but we'll make sure if once we're not, this will help serve those students that are already in there even more. So we're really doubling down, or doubling up, I should say, on our efforts to work with our four-year-olds, and this is an exciting opportunity for us. We're really, and could be more timely, considering what we're doing next fall. And that's it. Questions?
So, starting January, you're going to open a pre-K in Edson?
Yep. Where are we going to start? We're starting to recruit.
And then they'll be transported in September, they'll transfer.
Well, that class, that class, those four-year-olds will become kindergarten. So we're just going to move, you know, the teacher, the teacher assistant, the new furniture, everything we're doing at Edson, we're just going to move it over to Maha and recruit all of them.
Can you go back to the?
Sure.
Have we done this?
Yes.
This is so exciting. This is so exciting. I love that we are, and one of the issues when we decided to go to Maha pre-K was were we abandoning our community partners and what was the impact and began that. So I love that this is actually bringing, including our community partners in that way, and I think that that's very important for a lot of reasons. I'm sure GW is thrilled, and you're starting that recruitment now for those kids, and that was started in January? That's really exciting. I just, I am so happy about the way that this really rounds out the program that we've been talking about, and that this is a permanent kind of funding scheme, I think this is really, I'm really excited about that.
I think it's a good, I think rounds out is a really, you know, good phrase to use, because it does, it does address some of the concerns of our community-based partners, address some of the concerns about losing three-year-olds around the Montessori model, and also helps us move into our, you know, our location.
And I just want to say about the MBK grant, we, I have gotten a lot of feedback from friends about this, particularly about the Brothers of Bard and the participation in that. I have one friend in particular who said that first-time participation in that program has just been transformative, and that it is, you know, that was the word that she used, it's really been transforming for him, and he's in a completely different place now than he was. And so I just really appreciate those efforts and that focus, in particular, on those students, and it was particularly important at this point in time, and so I appreciate all the work that's going into that.
Mrs. Shear?
I would like to echo the support for these new grants around the pre-K especially, and I'm just wondering, for those slots that are full day, that will continue next year again, there will be 120.
Forever, basically.
So will those then just go lottery, in terms of which families would be able to get the full-day program? And will they be distributed to the different partners, or will there be certain partners?
Those that have the capacity to do it, that's one of the things. Some of our providers don't have, or don't want the capacity to move to that, to that level. So, you know, it really revolves around, you know, our work with them and figuring out who can do it. You know, some are larger, the cares obviously can, some are smaller, can't and don't really care to.
But it will be lottery for people who are interested in it.
I want to commend what's about a year ago, we worked on this pre-K program, because most of us, well, five years ago, we talked about, you know, pre, you know, also pre-K five years ago, and we thought we never was going to happen, like, you know, we have so many doubts, but, you know, thanks for your work and dedication, we're finally here.
Almost.
I'd like to add my congratulations to the district, to her team, I'm sure it was a team effort to do it. Dr. Spore sent out a list, Bosie's board members today with a whole list, and I mean, we're right up at the top in terms of, I mean, per capita student, I think we're probably the highest in the state. A couple, New York City's getting $2.2 million, we're getting $670,000. So that's great. Is this a technical question on this? How is this going to impact our ability to select the students that we're going to have in the four-year-old program? It doesn't.
It will not, it will not impact at all.
My Brothers Keeper, CCE, is that sent?
Yes. Yeah, sent for curfew, you know, with Ed, Ed Mann and Ms. Bondville, help me. Who's the other, who's the other partner, Mr. Strong, Kurt?
Lester.
Lester, thank you. And Lester Strong is involved in this as well. So they, Ms. Bondville brought this group, this, this program in when she was, well, she was operating this grant, and they came with this idea, and it was, it was last winter, it was so timely in the way that they, because I didn't consider what has been going on in the country and world. So we thought this is a great opportunity for them to be able to conduct, you know, workshops, conversations, opportunities for conversation between our students and the police officers they sit here every day, and vice versa. And it's important that we have some understanding here. And I think, given their credibility with our young people, CCE is really a good group to start this.
Acronyms change so much.
No, they're still CCE.
Mrs. Jordan?
I want to say too that it's a wonderful response to some of the concerns that we've heard from parents around some of the coffee and conversation last year. So I think it's a wonderful, positive response to that. I appreciate it, thank you.
I would just like to say kudos. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take my seat. Okay, sorry. So next on the superintendent's report, we have one of our partners that I just spoke about, and David Brownstein is here to talk to us about our Wild Earth program that's going on all over our district.
Hi, thank you for having me back. This is my third trip to the board today, and I'm glad to be here again and be a regular visitor to you with our annual report of what's happening at Wild Earth in the Kingston City School District. This is just our leading page, one of our favorite pictures, these are, these are two of your students in the woods at the Ivy and Rec Center, the old Ivy and Rec Center, which is now CED Hudson's land, and they donate that specifically for the purposes of these programs. And now, I wouldn't be a Wild Earth presentation, I can show you a short video, and so here's our newest video. Bill May. All your students.
Wild Earth is a not-for-profit people-oriented school. We meet thousands of kids at school for recess and in the woods for deep nature immersion.
We have a very diverse population of students. We have African-American, Latino, but I think the biggest disparity is the socioeconomic. We have kids who come from families where they may have a parent in jail, they don't necessarily know if they're going to eat and eat when they go home tonight.
So this is a different experience for me, and it just, I feel like I'm not helping.
We want them to feel the power of themselves as humans. Then they blossom and start to take in the rest of the world.
Do you notice something?
I love the deer here.
What I like about the woods is that everything is peaceful, it's only wild life, music of birds, beautifulness.
Thanks, so I want to give you a little update on, if you've seen some of that footage before, if you've been around, and we just kind of reformed into a short video, but Wild Earth's mission is to lead transformative nature immersion experiences that cultivate character, confidence, passion, perseverance in New York's youth. Wild Earth and the Kingston City School District have partnered for the last five years on engaging and empowering programs, and we're really excited about the progress we've made, and I want to tell you a little bit about it. We are right now in the second year of a four-year project that we call Nature Connection and Experiential Education at Kingston City School District. This year, we'll be in your district, we are in your district, for 120 days this school year. Every fifth and sixth grader at Miller and Bailey Middle Schools, about 1,100 students, get the following program, two full-day in-the-woods field trips, like the ones you saw. So we bookend the year with a fall field trip called Back to School, Back to Nature, and a spring field trip called Springing Into Nature. And then after those field trips are done, 50 kids at a time come out, so we do about two months of field trips in the fall and the spring. After those field trips are done, we then come into the schools, and we do 36 days of guided recess and after-school programming, two days a week in Bailey, two days a week in Miller. And after-school programming for a select group of kids who need a little bit more support, who are coming and getting that support, and more kind of one-on-one attention. Besides that, we've been collaborating on curriculum tie-ins with teachers, we're coming into your staff meetings and talking about our methods and pedagogy, learning about how you're working with kids, and we share, we're sharing best practices and things like that, and learning from each other. And then we just participated in the Superintendent's Day Program for teachers, I think there were 120 teachers, all middle school, all the middle school teachers, and we did a short program for them as well. So really, what's changed is instead of just being seen as kind of a fringe program, where it's separate from the school, we're really starting to integrate with what's happening in the faculty, we're really excited about that, because ultimately, we see ourselves as supporting and enriching what you're already doing really well. Importantly, and this is what's in front of you, is the full research report provided by the Benjamin Center at SUNY New Paltz, as we start to measure our outcomes. So what you're looking at is a report on the year one, year one of our study. And what we've seen, and one of the more exciting results, is that when Wild Earth is on your recess grounds, there's three times less behavioral incidents when we're present than when we're not present. Now, this could be somewhat coincidental, so we don't take credit for all of that, but clearly, more engaging activities, good mentors and role models, less problems on the, on the recess grounds. The other things that we're starting to see some positive outcomes on are our social and emotional wellness outcomes, peer interaction and perseverance, and we see some of that starting to happen in the classroom, we have kids who will apply themselves more, as we, you know, they face challenging situations in the woods, they face challenging situations on the playground, they're more likely to go back in the building and work on those things and know that they're getting positive regard, they're getting positive feedback, and they're more likely to take some risks in the classroom. So peer interaction and perseverance specifically, and we're hoping, we're seeing some positive, but not sufficiently significant yet, outcomes in empathy, confidence and self-efficacy, risk attitude, and comfort in nature. Most important, we're Most important, what we're looking for is that when kids come out of the middle school with full-blown Wild Earth programming, supplementing what they're already getting, that they're even more prepared to excel at high school and get to graduation, which, as you all know, is that important moment where, where success really changes. So I just want to go over a couple of new initiatives that we're doing to continue to build community and further to improve our outcomes. We ran our first Kingston summer camp last year. Most of the kids, or many of the kids, come to that summer camp for free. We're expanding that this year. We hope to have a spring break camp specifically located in the Kingston, in and around the Kingston City School District, on that, on that Ulster Landing Park or the Cedar Hudson Land. We're hoping to work on the Summer Five program this year. And we're really establishing our instructors and training because our, our idea is to source our future instructors from your students, or from students who are alumni from the Kingston City School District. So we're collaborating with the High School Internship Program, Ulster Youth Employment, and now with Ashley and Go Beyond Greatness. We are also, by the way, on the Peaceful Guardians, I knew Lester because we are also collaborating on the Peaceful Guardians Project and doing some programming with them. So there's a lot of collaboration going on among some of your community partners, which is really exciting. Because that's when, that's when, you know, when we're all not operating individually, it's real great. And Wild Earth itself is doing racial equity and social justice awareness and training right now with Ava Bynum at Omnibus. And we'll be coming up to speed on what it means to serve a very diverse district like Kingston. Finally, that's about, those are most of my prepared remarks. I just want to express some gratitude because that's what we do at Wild Earth before we do anything else. I'll do it at the end. And say, I want to thank Novo Foundation and Propel Capital that makes, makes these programs, helps really make these programs possible. They have leadership funding and supportive funding from the Klock Kingston Foundation, the Swans Family Foundation, Ulster Savings. And just recently, we found out today Hope for Youth Foundation is also supporting our Kingston project. Cedar Hudson provides all of this land at no cost, which is great. They're a great partner. Teaching the Hudson Valley has provided all the bussing, which is also fantastic. They're very willing to, they love this program and they want to see that happen. And of course, Dr. Padalino, Mary Beth Bondville, Liz Oliveto, Ms. Fitz, Mr. Sheber, the guidance counselors and staff that all make this project work so well. And of course, most of all, the students and our future leaders. They're fantastic and we really enjoy working with them all. So thank you. Any questions? Oh, here's some, I'm just trying to do some of the pictures from the program. I'll leave that one with you. Any, any, any questions?
I have just more of a comment. I'm trying to see where I marked it here. I mean, it's thrilling and I'm so glad to see this program. It's so important for kids to get outside and interact with each other. But I saw something about, that it was a bit disappointing, so I'm hard to turn it here, as far as this table two and the social, the increase in social emotional learning. And all I wanted to say was, I would gather that that's very hard to quantify and measure anyway. And then I would bet that we've made inroads and progress in that.
I would, I would bet too. You know, there are quantitative measures and we can get some significance on those. There are also qualitative measures.
Right.
As Dr. Jacobowitz is teaching me about how those work. And so what we are seeing is a lot of support in your, in your building from teachers about what they're seeing from their kids that may not be measured that well on a survey that a kid is taking on a certain day. So we're looking at both of those sides of things. And so far, we feel really encouraged by these results. And it was the first year. So we're, our engagement with the kids is almost doubling this year than it was last year. And we're going to step it up again. Seventh grade goes next year, so we're expanding by another 50% next year. And then the eighth grades, and then we'll be throughout, throughout your middle schools. And we are starting to do some stuff on a pilot basis in the elementary schools. And we are also at Mahar, we're just at Mahar today, surveying the woods there. Because there's some really beautiful woods right behind the building. And we're already planning some paths and thinking about how Wild Earth, when those kids, you know, start their universal pre-K, that they, they want to be spending a lot of time outside at that age. And so we're, we're hoping to help design some of your outdoor spaces out there and potentially work with some of your teachers on how to engage children in, in the outdoors in a positive way.
I would just say Ms. Bondville, that you have the qualitative measures, I think, show much more kind of the real causes and substance of what's happening with Wild Earth. But one thing you didn't mention, David, is the power of your instructors and the mentorship that is so important, and also how diverse your instructor base is. And that's something that is, that also you can't really measure. But when you watch those kids run to those instructors, it's very powerful.
I love to tell a story and thank you. This was not planned. But really interestingly, that the person who runs this program for Wild Earth, I'm not sure if he's, it's probably a picture in the book, but you can give me a hard time for his picture not being in the book, is Zach, Zach Jones. And he goes by the name Maui because he looks like Maui from Moana, in the movie Moana. So you may find him in your book. And Zach runs a staff of nine Wild Earth instructors, and he's a man of color. And the kids, I'll tell you just a couple of things about what happened, what were stories that we've seen happen this year. And there he is. You found him. He's on page four.
He's on page five four.
Four, the guy in the back with the sunglasses and the light blue, light blue, back on page four. And that's, that's Zach. And he grew up through Wild Earth's program. And he's from Newburgh. And he went to college at Clark University and graduated, and he's going to go off and do fashion design. And when he heard you were doing Wild Earth in Kingston, he was like, now I'm interested in staying. And he's been running this program and he needs every one of those 120 days. And what we've seen happen is that it really, while the nature part is really important and exciting that the kids are outside, what we're most excited about is the relationship building that's going on between the mentors on a daily basis. And I saw two things happen this year with Zach specifically. One is when we were out of the field trips and I went to visit, one of the girls came to him and like did some self-reporting. And she was like, I had a bad day today. I got in trouble at school. And was telling him this, that she wasn't, didn't have a particularly great day. And he said to her, you know, I expect more from you than that, you know, if you've gotten to know each other. And you can do better than that. And I thought that was a really key moment of her having an ally, her feeling like she had an ally, you know? And that she felt accountable to someone else besides maybe a parent or a teacher. And there was another person looking out for her. She felt comfortable to, to self-report like that, which was great. The other thing is, right after our field trip programs in the fall, Zach was walking through the school building. And the kids don't know what program is coming to them all the time. They don't know that, that we were expanding. And, you know, first of all, they, they, they said to him, you know, why are you here? We just saw you in the woods the other day. And he said, well, we're going to start being here twice a week. And they, you know, were jumping for joy. And importantly, the boys of color specifically were coming along as he was walking down the hall to get their gap and, you know, to get their, get their love from Zach. And, you know, so important that, you know, with so few teachers of color, especially males in the school district, that they have role models like this, that they can feel connected to, especially someone who is running the program. So they look at him and like, this is the boss. And it can be, it can be, you know, really switch something on that we're hoping is part of the additional benefits of Wild Earth program.
This is Jordan. I'd, I'd like to congratulate you on the program as well. Many, many years ago, we used to call it outdoor education. Remember? That's how old I am. But I, I did, I do think there's so much value, especially when we live in one of the most beautiful places in the world, for kids to be out in the environment that we live in and look up from their phones and be able to have that connection. So I know it's not just playing in the woods, but it's really building an appreciation for that. And I did notice when you were talking about the incidents on the playground when you're not there, are three times. I think you'll know you have achieved, achieved greater success when the, the days, it doesn't matter if you're there or not, because then there'll be evidence of carryover, you know? And that, to me, is what's meaningful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Shalise.
I just want to say that the, what'd you say? This was the third year that you've been here?
This, well, we, this is the fifth year of partnering with Kingston City School District. This is the second year of a project that we put together to really measure the results and the outcomes.
Well, I know you've made many, several years of presentations.
Yeah, third year of presentation, yeah.
And the third, and, and the increase in what you're doing, what you're presenting to us this year as opposed to three years ago, two years ago, however long ago. It's really, it's really wonderful that you're able to expand an offer so much more to the students in the district.
And I, and I would just say, it's, it's because this school district is so progressive and willing to take some chances on doing something that's a little different, that's made that possible. And now school districts around you are calling and saying, how about us? And so you guys are leading the way, not only locally in the Hudson Valley, but on part of a network of 25 schools in, in, in Canada and in the Northeast region of the United States who are also, who I've made these reports, opened these reports to, who are like, wow, can we do this in our own communities? And so Kingston's leading the way.
So thank you to all of our staff here.
I do want to say, I know that although Ms. Bondville has threatened many times to make me go on a Wild Earth thing, and I'm not really a woodsy kind of guy. Most of what I know, seeing the kids come back from the, from the field trips and they're covered in mud and they made fire and, and they're just, I mean, they're really excited about it. And I'm glad to see we'll be able to look from, from pre-K through middle school, you know, be able to interact with Wild Earth and have our, have our students get out there. Because like I said, 90% of their time is spent indoors, 100% of my time is spent indoors. But I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm too old to learn anything yet. But 90% of their time, so it's really great that we have this, this opportunity. So thank you.
Thank you. And they're also integrated into the rest of our programming because, well, many of them, maybe like, oh, this is just what I got at school. It's like this programming is available to them all year round. So the ones who are really interested in it, we're kind of cherry picking them and saying, hey, come on up to summer camp and come, come to our, our monthly programming and things like that. So it's a great opportunity for them to have that, those, that curriculum activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Last thing in the superintendent's report, we have our Mahar report. CSR and BBL are here to talk. Our problem.
Sounds good. Good evening, everybody. Here to give you a quick update on progress over at the Mahora Elementary School. Lots going on this month, but we did have the boiler start up on November 20th. They're currently heating the building, working fantastic so far. The mechanical contractor is working on the controls for the units right now. They're running a little wild right now until the Wi-Fi is hooked up throughout the building. That would be for a little bit, but the control work is ongoing. At the new entrance, all the concrete work is finished. They were backfilled last week. They're starting with masonry tomorrow. They have all the scaffolding in place and they'll be starting to put in some CMU units tomorrow. Speaking of masonry, in the pre-K area, the masonry for the ADA bathrooms is complete, as well as the public bathroom outside of the reading area. Lintils at all of the openings, such as the new doors, new security windows, those are being installed as the openings are being opened. Door frames were delivered on Monday, which is helping us complete framing installation on the second floor. They're about 50% installed today. I spoke to my superintendent today. With door frames being installed, they're also following up that work with sheet rock insulation, closing up the, closing up the framing as the MEP contractors are finishing their mechanical, electrical plumbing roughens inside of the walls. And then in the office, everyone's continuing to close out their submittals, which are about 80% complete today. And they're making sure all their materials are on site. As I said, all of the concrete work is done. This is the backfilled area of where the new elevator is going to be, which is right here. And the new doors to get into the building will be in this space right here. There is an additional slab that needs to be flipped down first. But some masonry work needs to happen before that can happen. This is what it looked like before they backfilled. They had to put in all of these concrete footings and foundation walls. And then they had to apply the foundation waterproofing, make sure it was watertight so it didn't have any issues down the road with any wetness or anything like that before they could backfill. Inside the building, these large mechanical units are being hung throughout the building, making sure you guys get the proper air circulation needed when the building is occupied. Now, this is in the pre-K office, at the new security window when you walk right in and at the new door. They're installing these lintels right here to make sure the openings are structurally sound and the doors line properly. As I said, the masonry in the pre-K bathroom is complete. They will begin to put in all their plumbing fixtures and finishes in here as well. So Tom can get in there in a few weeks and finish up his work that he had. Today, they started opening up where the elevator doors are going to come in on the first floor, which was quite a feast. They decided to make the openings before we put in the masonry on the outside so it would have some room to take everything out before we close everybody in. It's a good idea. Although, as I said, we have door frames going on. Sheet rock is going up, it's starting to look like a more finished product in all of the office spaces, as well as some roofing throughout the building. This is actually in Dr. Padalino's new bathroom. All the plumbing is done, as well as some of the electrical roofing. You do have, you do have to do that. Work in that, work in that. Again, some mechanical ductwork that's going on, as well as some electrical boxes down here and some wire that's being routed to the associated units. And I'm sorry that was short, but does anybody have any questions today?
I have one question. If you could go back to the first frame, I think, with the elevator? So I'm not, okay, so you'll go in the door and then go in, where's the elevator opening?
The elevator will open the inside of the building. This is just where the shaft will be on the outside. You won't be able to see the elevator from the outside of the building.
Oh, in the building.
You go in the building, take a right, and then you can get onto the elevator from there.
As part of the security design, there's, there's a, like, they call it a man trap. You have a outside set of doors, you come into a space, and then you're loud into the building and then you're, you can go upstairs and downstairs on the elevator.
Thank you.
Any may ask?
Yeah, I have a question about the, the heating and ventilation, yeah. How high will the ceiling be? Is there going to be a ceiling covering?
Yeah, there will be a ceiling covering up. I believe in the national hall. Those will be covered.
And 10 feet?
I know.
9 feet?
The ceiling's a 50, 9 feet.
9 feet?
I just wanted to ask, it's, it's exciting. And when it's safe, can we have a tour?
Of course.
We could set something up.
I know we saw, some of us saw, we had that open house and we had the families in and it's a lot of positive change though.
It looks great so far.
Great, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Maybe, maybe beginning of February, maybe that's time to have one more, have a little more.
Yeah, I remember.
The windows are doing in January, so.
Yep, we should have window installation going on. Might have a few more finishes. It won't be as messy over there right now, as it is right now. But I think that'll be a good time to set something up.
Whatever, just get it on the lookway.
You still have to take the stairs off.
Yes, we'll have the elevator to that. It'll be happy gap. Any other?
Any other questions?
You're probably good.
Mr. Butler over here?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Same to you. That concludes the presentation.
And I thank you very much. That brings us to the portion of the agenda, consent agenda. And are there any resolutions that any trustee would like to pull at this point in time? Okay, here I am, I'm in motion. Any discussion? Any consent agenda? All right, then, all those in favor are accepting the consent agenda. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And we have some donations. Mr. Jordan, can I prevail upon you to read the formations?
Yes, I do. It's just that my mouse isn't working. I, I see it right here. We are in the seat of a generous donation of nine fifty-dollar Walmart gift cards from the Fair Street Reform Church. To be used for the purchase of mittens, hats, warm socks for KCSB students in need. And it was made to the proceeds of the annual classic car show, with the help of the fairly new career shop. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the portion of.
Can I ask a question about the B thirty-two, which was pulled? That was the one on the.
We got an email this afternoon?
Just a question. The explanation was that, that that's, so there's a preliminary number that's supplied by the state, and then there's a final number that's supplied by the state.
We submit this time of year, the state calculates a, I guess preliminary number based on budget for this year. They also report at this time of the year, the final number for last year.
Okay, so we're.
What you were looking at, what you were looking at in comparing was this year's preliminary number to last year's final number. And the difference that you noted is a lot.
So, so I was wondering, so, so we are actually approving the preliminary number and the final number for last year. So, or just approving the final number, or what?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the preliminary number, which is otherwise known as, as the estimated rate. You know, we, we use, well, we use to let people know sort of what the range of a cost is going to be. So, that number's used also. And that gets trued up later, a year from now, actually.
Is there any questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All right, and now we're up to the board portion of the agenda, and beginning with the policy committee. I, I don't know, Mr. Jordan, are you prepared to report? Do you want me to report out?
You report out, that's fine. I, I was expecting to report out, but.
Okay, no, go ahead. We had a pretty brief agenda. I was filling in for an Amson trustee. And we also had Mrs. Collins was out. She's got a broken one. Yeah. And Maureen was with us this past meeting as the chair emeritus. So, that was wonderful, Maureen Bowers. And the agenda covered new regulations for sexual harassment policy, the new policy which we require to have in place now. And they're very, quite long. I think we're, we're having the first reading today. And we'll hope to pass it in January. And so that took quite a amount of time, because the, the regulations are pages and pages and pages. And we also discussed purchasing policy. And our next meeting is January fifth, fourth? First, first Friday. Yeah. I, I believe it's the fifth, at nine thirty, right here. Okay, so, next meeting, the ninth of January, will have a resolution to approve sexual harassment, zero, one, one, zero, sexual harassment regulations. Okay, do you have anything, Dan?
The only thing I would add is that I think it's noteworthy that there's going to be an effort for a lot of professional development around this policy and the regs. And also, I think that they, this policy is something that families should be looking at and talking about because it has far-reaching implications for changes in kind of social moorings. And I think that it's going to be more than the school's responsibility to ensure that our community has a, a more awareness and a little more sensitivity to those issues around sexual harassment.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Okay, next up is the facilities committee, and I, yes, oh, I'm sorry, questions?
Mrs. Collins, a few months ago, you and I had talked about maybe putting the wellness policy back on the agenda. I put that out when, at the beginning, when you had told me whoever's going to be making up the agenda as we move forward.
Any other questions for policy? Facilities, facilities committee met on December fifth, and we have finished inspections of all of the open operating schools in the district. And we're very happy to have finished. And I did talk briefly at the last meeting about the issues that arose, so I won't go into that again. Storage being primary among them, there's a lack of storage. But we also did have a report on KHS Capital Project, the progress on the five-year capital improvement plan. And our next meeting will be in January, I believe it's on the ninth, no, the sixteenth. And we will be resuming steering committee meetings on the KHS Capital Project at that time. Since the board has voted to move forward with the KHS Second Century Project, the steering committee will reconvene in January. Any questions about that? Okay. And then the parent board, Matt, will speak. And Dr. Pedalino?
I will defer to, I was not there last week.
Okay.
I'm commissioned and.
Mrs.?
And Jordan.
I wasn't there because I couldn't find the people.
Okay. Oddly, the thing was, Verge would be in there. In fairness to Mrs. Jordan, she was rushing like from a facilities.
I was coming from facilities and I must have missed a window. I looked in here, nobody was here. There was no one in the parking lot, so I, and then they must have all arrived here for a case. I apologize.
Well, Mrs. Lau. Okay. I'd like to thank Mrs. Schufeld that ran the meeting, but John Verge was there also. There was a small group present. We met on November twenty-sixth with several schools represented. I would like to see all the schools represented, so we're, we're working on that. There was a lot of talk about playgrounds and equipment at the middle schools. But, no, it was talk about the missing signs or letters on Miller, but the next day they were fixed, so that's, that was good. Anything else you would like to add, Mr. Verge? We need more people. We need everybody to represent the school. Our next meeting will be at Robert Graves, January thirty-first, at five thirty. Any questions for Mrs. Lau? Okay, and that brings us to coffee and conversation. We had a coffee and conversation, we, we were here, we had a coffee and conversation on Saturday, right here in this room. And Mrs. Lau, Mrs. Jordan, Dr. Pedalino and I had a lovely conversation. And coffee, we christened the new coffee maker. And we brought Christmas cookies, so there was lots of stuff, but we had no members of the public show up by ten forty. So we decided we were excused, since the meeting was supposed to go until eleven. It was nine thirty to eleven, and by ten forty, no one had shown up, so.
Which means that everybody's perfectly satisfied.
So how was the coffee anyway?
The coffee was very good, very good. It was very good. And our next coffee and conversation is January, okay, we'll have to get the date out at Mount Academy.
There were good people there.
Yes, there were good people there. And coffee, I'm sure. And that concludes the committee reports, and we're on to old business. Certain old business, any trustee would like to raise this moment, old business? Okay. New business, new business. Mr. Shaughnessy?
I think, I, I think this letter, this came from NISDA, I believe, on the proposal to be delivered to the governor at some point, probably by the end of the year, about the capital adding the, also the, the BOSI's capital projects that had been approved by voters to the tax cap exemption. So I would be in favor of sending this letter of support. We can make a motion, but if you read it or whatever.
Well, we've all read it, but if you want to read it for the public, that's fine. And there, the legislation action committee is here, so go ahead.
So, this is a dear Governor Cuomo, it would be on behalf of the Kingston City School District Board of Education, a component district of Ulster County BOSI's, we are writing to ask for your signature on Senate Bill seven, seven, three, zero, Murphy, and Assembly ninety-two-five, Gallow, which would make a limited adjustment to the property tax cap by counting BOSI's capital costs the same way as school districts' capital costs are counted. Currently, the state allows school districts to exclude their capital construction costs from the tax cap calculation. However, when initially implemented, the state interpreted the exclusion to only include districts' capital expenditures, not those of our school districts make, not those our school districts make to fund the capital expenditures related to BOSI's facilities. BOSI's encourages, encourage efficiencies in program delivery and administrative operations through the use of shared services. BOSI's also provide direct services and programs to nearly a hundred thousand students statewide each day. Our district relies on our BOSI's for many supports, including provision of specialized programs such as PTAC and special education for our students. As a board, we want to be able to, we want to be able doesn't make sense. As a board, we want to be able to support our BOSI's and the facilities' needs. All of our students should be able to assess, to access their education in state and modern facilities, regardless of whether those programs and services are delivered in a district or BOSI's building. However, not allowing us to include our BOSI's capital costs in our exclusion forces us to choose between programs for our BOSI's students and students who receive their programs and services in the district. We urge you to sign Senate Bill seven, seven, three, zero, Assembly Bill ninety-eight-five, ten, three, 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 education. And our students sincerely, this will be signed by our board president.
And that's the one that, NISDA recommended? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Turned it out of my district email.
Okay, you're moving that second? Okay, second, okay. And discussion, any discussion about that?
I think Mr. Olson did a kind of a little research on this and put together some information on it, and I don't know. And I actually didn't know we were talking about this, but I didn't share that with the board. I don't know, do you want to just kind of pipe in a little bit now on what you did? I know, you know, there's a, there's, there's there's some trickiness to this that involves, that involves the, us, you know, the local school districts as well. It's, you know, the idea is a good one in that having the cap, our portion of the capital project for the BOSI's be part of our tax levying limit, which would increase our tax levy. That is a good thing, because we can collect more taxes. On the other side of it is, we generally try to keep our tax levy as low as we possibly can, even no matter how high it goes. If our tax levy next year was eight point six, we're not going in taxes into eight point six. So, so in some ways, it, it puts it up there, and it helps in other ways, you know, it really wouldn't necessarily have an impact depending on the, depending on where our calculation was. The other thing is the, the manner in which those projects will need to be voted on under these, under these new laws would, would in some ways, could possibly surprise some of our voters, I think, and some voters in other districts in not understanding, and also the, the responsibility for communicating the intricacies of this will be ours, because they will be on our ballot. So it would be the idea of, you know, if the Kingston City School District voted no, but everyone else voted yes, we would be outvoted, but still be required to pay the larger portion of the capital project due to our size. And that would be, have to be communicated to our, to our voters as well. So it's a, it's an interesting, there's a lot, you know, I mean, not that that would happen, but that's not, you know, right now, really, a capital project, the vote is only required a board vote, not a community vote. This would require a community vote put out and run by us and communicated and promoted and education to our community by us. And then the possibility of our community coming back to us and saying, whoa, we voted no, how did this happen? So there's, there's some, it, it's tricky.
It is tricky.
Mr. Olson, do, I'm sorry, did I?
No, I, I, I was thinking the board was going to get that document so they could see it, but you.
It was a very big document. I apologize.
You've mentioned most of the issues that were in it, so, that were, that were in the document, so I think it's.
Well, can you forward that to the board? It was my understanding that, that we were going to
Yeah.
have an analysis and discuss it at this meeting, because we talked about it last.
And the BOSI's be able to choose which ones, is that correct, certain ones or not, or is that this is all or nothing?
There are different recommendations.
No.
Well, no, I was going to ask, is this, so it would require a special election similar to the one they just did in Dutchess County for a capital project?
Well, if the BOSI's wanted to put it up off, off
Right.
schedule from the may vote, yes. Now, if you, if it's my understanding that if the BOSI, if we didn't want it to count against the tax levy, the BOSI's could have the project go for the old way. Then it would not go against ours, so.
It gives them the option?
It gives them the, it gives us then the option to say, okay, you know, maybe if it's a big project, then we want to do it, it's just that, they can, they can do it either way. You know, I think being, one of the things that is unique for us in Ulster County and being part of Ulster BOSI's is the burden of financing certain things because we're the largest school district in the BOSI's. And the flip side of it could also be true, where our people could vote yes because, because our students access so many BOSI's program, and everyone else could vote no. And then we have our community saying, hold it, you know, this is the best thing for our kids and we voted yes, why did they go down? And then we get, we have the, we could tell them a lot, but that's still our, you know, that's still our responsibility pretty much to our taxpayers. And not that I'm against it, I just think that it all needs to be out there.
Well, that's why we brought it up last meeting.
And I, I apologize, I would absolutely, I didn't know that.
So you wouldn't have known, and I'm surprised you weren't watching us from home, but.
Be in live stream?
I, I, I logged on, I can't make it wrong, I felt so.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
I have to admit that I, I didn't read this so carefully except for, I'm surprised that it doesn't state that the exclusion would only apply if the voters in the component districts approved it. And then it would exempt as if it were a district approved the capital expenditure.
I feel in fairness to all the trustees, they haven't had an opportunity to access that, that analysis, although they, they had the NISDA advocacy update.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
We do.
Have you moved to table it till our next meeting?
I, I, I mean, actually, I will, if, if, I could withdraw the motion because. I, I, I mean, actually, I will, I will, if, I could withdraw the motion, because it has to be, it has to be proved by the governor by the end of the year, and we're not gonna meet again. He's probably gonna veto it anyway. It touches his tax cap.
If, yeah, if what we heard at the county meeting is, is accurate, then quite likely.
So, I will draw my motion. And it was a useful discussion anyway.
It definitely was, absolutely. Thank you. All of you. Any other new business? Mrs. Jordan?
Well, Mrs. Jordan forwarded me some information that was passed on about the Secretary of Education, Mrs. DeVos, and her new ideas for Title IX changes, which are not to benefit of victims. And I don't think that we can vote right now to do anything, but there will be a comment period. And what I would like to do is share this information with the board, and then just, if, if you have time while you're drinking eggnog or something, to peruse it. I think it's worthy of a conversation, but there's also a lot of crossing between our newly adopted sexual harassment policy. And so, it's gonna be very interesting to see, like, what is the prevailing? I, I know in New York State, the law will supersede anything, but what about if it's federal regulation? I don't know. So, anyway, I just think it's very interesting. There are a few different resources that you can go on, on this link. They're all quite informative, and so, I would just like to suggest that we share this, and then maybe at, I'm trying to find the date. I'm sorry, I'm here, we've been up at that mess, by which we have to make comment. But I will try to work on something and propose it at our next meeting, or if it's before that, I'll share it by email. Can we do that? And if people.
We can, we can.
Or I can just, or, or anybody who has a comment can put it in individually.
There was another recommendation, an article, about the Secretary of Education's recommendations that may be shared with the safety coordinator for the district as well, because it does impact victims, and so, I think.
There are three main things, one of them is like, if you don't report it to the right person, it doesn't count. So, you can't necessarily report it to a coach or a teacher. If you don't report it to the Title IX person, then it's like you're off race, and, you know.
Yeah, it's.
So, there are a lot of concerns that I think we might have, and it's worthy of looking at. So, I'll share that link, and we'll talk about it.
Thank you. Yes.
I would like to get clarification from our attorney, that if it's, if the regulations or the changes are adopted at the federal level, will they override New York State?
Right.
Because it's, you know, any school that would be receiving federal funds.
Right.
Would be subject to that, I believe.
Yes.
It's the way it usually works.
Uh-huh. We can ask for, I mean, definitely. Thank you.
And I wondered if we wanted to have a conversation about NIS, our Ulster County School Boards Association discussion around voting?
Oh.
We hear it, we'll have.
Well, actually, actually, if I could jump to voting machines?
Yes.
I, I would, I would just say.
And locations.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we, we have some meetings coming up over the next couple of weeks with the board elections, to have some conversations about it in general. I mean, I think, I guess what I say, let, let's not, I don't think it's something we need to be overly worried about right now.
Okay.
When it's time to worry, I'll let you know.
But before that.
Yes, before that, long before that.
Well, it's also just the machines, it's also just.
Yes, well, and location, yeah, locations and machines, those two things kind of go together as well, because if we were forced to use machines other than the county's machines, we would probably want to use fewer machines, and we would have fewer places.
Well, we talked about paper ballots and seeing.
I don't think that's, you know, like, a balance, not opt out.
Options for Kingston.
Or, or can we, what are we trying to do?
And we're too big.
Yeah, but it also doesn't address.
Well.
The safety issue, still people coming in to use.
By next meeting, I'll, I'll.
Thank you. It doesn't address it. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question.
Any of, sure.
So, there's new regulations on lunch, lunch requirements, lessening for, reducing the restrictions on what we can.
Right.
Eat versus.
Okay.
I don't know if it's mandatory or not. If it's not, if it's not mandatory, are we going to follow it, or are we gonna continue with what we provide now?
I haven't, I just started reading what, what came through this week, and I know, I handed it to Mr. Olson, and I'll meet with Mr. Olson, Mr. Corelli, and see what they're, I mean, I don't see us going backward from where we are. I know, and Dr. Schubert's, he didn't like to see us go backward, he thinks we already have. So, we, but no, I don't, I don't think, again, I think our food service, as you've heard me say so many times, Mr. Corelli and his team, our food service has done such a phenomenal job in what they do. You know, it's a, and while, you know, staying within this, you know, the regulations with federal government, I don't know if there's any reason to change that. So, we'll, but we'll have that conversation, and I think we'll come back and report after the board.
Thank you.
It's gonna work out for you. It's gonna vary two percent.
Okay.
It's okay, I was by a switch. I mean, all I see.
Board member announcements? Any board member announcements? I would like to say that I attended the Kingston High School theatric, theatrics? Is it, yeah, theatrics. It's not musical theatrics, but theatrics. Production of Twelve-Way Re jurors at this past weekend, and it was phenomenal. It was very well done, it's very well cast, I don't have criticism of it. It was just great. And Reginald Rose, he was looking down, original playwright, would be very, very happy with the production that the high school put on this past weekend. So, kudos to the cast, the crew, Mr. Rosa, everyone who is associated with it. Any other board member announcements? Okay. Public participation, is there anyone who would like to address the board at this point? I don't have any motion, Mr. Jordan?
Sir. So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And happy holidays, if anyone would see, and we'll see you on the other side.